Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 27th, 2025 Portsmouth Town Council Meeting. In the event of any emergencies, we will ask you to please leave orderly either through the door you came, the door that is behind your left shoulder, or the door that is behind Mr. Reese here. We will all go over to the School Department Building and wait for further instructions from our first responders. I would ask you all to now please join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women in harm's way.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Gleason?
Here.
Ms. Blank?
Here.
Ms. McDowell?
Here.
Ms. Patton?
Here.
Mr. Payaro?
Here.
Mr. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
I am here. Thank you very much. President's Executive Summary, at the conclusion of last meeting's open session, we had an executive session, which we discussed some legal issues. There were no votes taken. Next up, we have our consent agenda. We have a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to receive and place and file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And we have our minutes for both that executive session and also our regular session on the 14th.
Motion to approve the 10:14, 25 minutes and executive minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have tax vouchers of 2025, 1027-01, and 2025, 1027-02.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Rayner, Town Administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. During the week of September 22nd, the Portsmouth Emergency Management Association conducted a full-scale dam damage assessment exercise involving the Lawton Valley and the Melville Dams. The multi-agency training event included unmanned aerial systems and the emergency communications coordination with partners across Rhode Island and Massachusetts. The exercise was a great success, and plans are already underway for a follow-up exercise in spring of 2026. So on behalf of the Town of Portsmouth and our Emergency Management Agency, I thank everyone involved in this exercise for their time, expertise, and partnership in helping to strengthen our disaster preparedness and resilience. The previously approved Community Development Block Grant Award for the replacement of boilers, hot water tanks, and related equipment at Quaker Manor Estates is underway. The project is expected to take up to six weeks, and Sabatius Housing believes the project will be complete by early December. The Butts Hill Fort Fall Cleanup is a volunteer event which is happening this coming Sunday, November 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Volunteers are invited to support the clearing of brush and debris from the fort's earthworks and ramparts ahead of this winter. The meeting point for the fort is at the fort entrance on Butts Street off of Sprague Street. Volunteers are asked to bring work gloves, protective gear, protective eyewear, tools like rakes and weed whackers if you have them. This year's cleanup is dedicated to Colonel Burton C. Quist, United States Marine Corps, one of the Butts Hill Fort Restoration Committee founders who passed away in 2023. U.S. Marines are encouraged to join the effort as a way to celebrate the Corps' 250th birthday on November 10th. Just a reminder that the entire community is invited to participate in the Third Annual Secconit Coastal Bike and Stroll. The event hosted by the Island Park Preservation Society and Bike Newport will be coming. This will be this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and more information is posted on the town website. Last week, Governor McKee and the Rhode Island Department of Education Commissioner Infante Green announced that Portsmouth has been awarded $40,000 for a Learn 365 RI grant. This program supports communities that are finding creative ways to help students learn beyond the regular school day, with a focus on improving math skills and school attendance. We'll be working with the Portsmouth School Department to decide how best to use the funds to support our students and keep that positive momentum going. Rideot is developing a statewide rail plan and has asked municipalities to help promote a brief public survey. We've posted a link to the survey on the town website, and we will also post flyers and posters when they arrive. I encourage residents to share feedback. It's quick, confidential, and it will inform future service and accessibility. And then lastly, just a reminder that Town Hall will be closed Tuesday, November 11th in honor of Veterans Day, and the probate court that is scheduled for that day will be rescheduled for the following day, Wednesday, November 12th. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Will we be having the annual Veterans Day ceremonies here?
I assume so. I have not heard anything from any of the organizers of the events yet.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Rayner? Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have resignations and appointments. We have two appointments for the Dog Park Committee for the Kirklands.
Mr. President, motion to appoint David Kirkland and Carrie Mathers-Kirkland to the Dog Park Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And then we have two applicants for the Economic Development Committee. One is a general applicant, and one is our student liaison at the high school. The student liaison needs to be appointed from today through August 30th. This is a one-year term for the general school year. First up, will we can do Mr. Rego?
Yes, motion to approve Mr. Rego to Economic Development Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And then we have Peter.
Motion to approve Peter J. Tyler Witx. I apologize for that name, if I got it right, or wrong, I should say, to the Economic Development Committee for a period to August, I'm sorry, August 30th.
31st. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, under old business, we have Disc Golf, Discussion on New Information Prevented by Citizens and Related Correspondents Regarding to Disc Golf. This is Mr. Reese. We have some letters that were sent in after the fact that you wanted to bring forward. I don't want this to go into an all-night discussion.
Okay.
So let's.
We'll do the best we can. Mr. Reese, before you start, I have a point of order. Discussion on the already voted-on item, according to Robert's rules, can only be brought forward on two different motions, a motion to rescind and a motion to reconsider, one of which Mr. Reese is unable to bring about, and it also was not on the agenda.
At this point, we're not doing either one of those motions. We're just going to have discussion on.
But no, he's not unable to bring a motion to discuss it to the floor.
Understood.
So then I'm appealing your ruling.
All right. I'm going to allow the discussion, but if there's a motion to rescind the original, it would have to come from one of the four people who did it, and they would have to then put it on the agenda.
But the problem is that he's also not allowed to bring a motion to discuss an item that has already been voted on by the council since he was in the minority of that vote.
If there is new information, which I don't believe any of this is new information, you are correct. But I'm going to let it go forward temporarily to see where it goes. I also am with you that by Robert's rules, it shouldn't be allowed.
My appeals to you by virtue of the chair.
Yep.
I also support that there's no new evidence presented.
Mr. Reese.
All right. Well, I haven't listened yet. All right. I'm just going to read why I brought it forward. Several constituents came forward after the Town Council passed the agenda request for a two-year disc golf trial at the Glen. They provide an information not discussed at previous Town Council meetings. This agenda just provides the citizens an opportunity to express their concerns. I share the same concerns that disc golf at the Glen be as safe as possible, and that's really what I'm looking for, and prioritizes the needs and concerns of citizens. I will add that several people just mentioned they would no longer feel safe in walking the Glen due to the possibility of being struck by a high-speed flying disc. One other observation was that very little information regarding safety of non-players, liability, and incorporation into an existing multi-use municipal park was presented prior to the vote. I did a lot of research, and one of the things that should happen with this is there should be a professional planner involved, because, and this is why I'm concerned about the safety as much, and I think other people were. It says particularly in multi-use public parks where the public and players share the same space, there's more of a chance of an interface between the players', you know, projectiles, and the public. So that also, if you go through and get a planner, the first thing the planner does is come and look at the course, look at the land that the course is going to go on, and make sure that the land is even suitable for a disc golf, because some places aren't, just because of the interface between roads and paths and walking trails and the amount of space it takes up. For a nine-hole disc golf, recommended by the PDGA, the Professional Disc Golf Association, they recommend 10 acres for a nine-hole disc golf to separate people. And most places, and one of them was sent in to us, and that was this Borderland State Park. Well, that has a mansion there along with it, and that was what the guy was using for a comparison. But that's 843 acres compared to 120 that the town has. The town already has that 120 acres divided into six venues for sports, and we'd be intersecting another item into that same area. And that's my concern, is that it could be entering into a situation with which we hadn't really gotten the information on and thought through as far as hackable just to this site. I mean, there's nothing wrong with disc golf. It might just be that this isn't the right site for it. So then I was going to give people a chance to express their opinions, with your permission, sir.
Well, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but I hear your concerns about safety. But if we go down the full safety route, then we have to discuss everything that happens at the Glen, and whether or not we should have horseback riding because somebody could get kicked by a horse, whether or not we should have softball there anymore because somebody could get kicked by a horse.
Right now, we have a certain quantity of things in there. This is adding one more into the same area where things are already happening, like walking trails, and you can't predict. This is a little bit horseback riding, because there's a horse, you can know what's there. It's like a fairway in a golf course. There's a whole area where they don't allow walking trails in golf courses. There's a reason for that. You don't know where the projectiles are coming from. You stay at uncertain, you're a golfer, you stay in certain areas, you don't go strolling down the freeway, because that's the most dangerous place to go, right? Maybe you do. And so my thing is, yes, we are introducing a new thing which might not be compatible with the other uses there. It's not just that it's another dangerous thing, or it's that this is in addition to what's already taking place on the same land that they're going to do it on. And that's the reason I want to hear just what the citizens have to say. I think they didn't, not a lot of people knew what disc golf was. I didn't. I know all about it now. So, because I did a lot of research. So that's why I think the people need another shot at this, just to voice their opinions. And right now, that's all it's going to be, is just their opinions.
Rodrick, would you like to say a few words about this before we get too far?
Yes, I will.
I want to keep this as quick as possible.
Roger.
We had a discussion. There was a lot of information. There was multiple opportunities to speak of this, both at the Park and Rec Committee, which had a six-to-zero vote, and then at the meeting.
Yeah, over a year into this already.
We have had time to discuss this. Folks could have done research. I'm sure the research that Mr. Reese done was just a little bit more thorough than he gave it to the last meeting. Can't be done by, you know, a Google search within an hour. So.
Go ahead. Okay. A couple of questions about your research. You said you compared disc golf with regular golf, which you cannot.
No, I'm not comparing the two.
You compared it, and now I'm going to hit you with the reason why it can't be compared. Out of all the disc golf courses around the United States, most of them have walking paths. If you could read the letter through Mr. Andrew Buckley sent you from Borderland, yes, they have more acreage there, but disc golf takes up a sixteenth of that course. I have to speak here. Yeah, I gave you your chance. So research upon that. Now, I did some research also on.
Remember, you're speaking to the entire council, not just.
So I did some other research on the other activities that are at the Glen. By far more dangerous than disc golf, all of them. You have numbers such as the playground, 200,000 emergency visits per year from children at playgrounds, all right? 15 to 17 of those result in death, okay? Horse injuries, 65,500 per year, 83% by falling off the horse, 100 deaths per year. Softball, over half a million injuries per year, 511,000 to be exact. 1,100 are severe injuries resulting in medical conditions, 750 to the neck and face. Baseball, over 600,000 injuries per year, 627,000 to be exact, 10 deaths per year. Dog bites, 4.5 million dog bites per year, 18% require direct medical attention, 70 have resulted in death. Those are all activities that take place at the Glen. Now, you mentioned that disc golf is going to be taking place in the same parts of the Glen that these activities do. No, they don't. We went through with Town Council members, you were invited also, to come walk the Glen, and saw how we did multiple redesigns of this to make sure we stay away from all areas that are currently occupied by other activities. Not only activities, we have away from other neighbors that are neighboring the course. Okay? Going on with that, we had talked about where you said it would be, we need a planner for this. I think what we've done over the past year, planning out this course, going over it with Town Council, going over it with Parks and Rec, has been more than sufficient planning on getting this course put in, out of the way of all of the activities, so everybody can use the Glen. But if you're telling me that disc golf is dangerous, well, if you're telling me disc golf is dangerous, then you need to remove the ability to walk your dog at the Glen. You need to remove the ability to ride a horse at the Glen. You need to remove the ability to play baseball or softball at the Glen. You need to take away the volleyball courts. You need to take away just about everything you do at the Glen, because it's more dangerous than disc golf. You know, you better be careful driving in your car down to the Glen, because that's more dangerous than disc golf. Not a single death has ever happened due to a disc. There was one occasion that I believe a letter was sent in that you had mentioned, or I don't know if you mentioned it right now, but you had brought in that someone got hit in the eye with a disc in Martha's Vineyard. Now, did you do any research on that, on what happened with that case? Did anybody?
I believe she mentioned it in the law.
She mentioned, okay, so are we aware that we contacted the defense lawyer for that lawsuit? The gentleman jumped up and tried to catch the disc. That is the reason why he got hit with the eye with the disc. He tried to sue the town, he tried to sue, I guess, Inova, and none of those suits went through. A jury had, jury came to a conclusion that disc golf is not inherently dangerous, and that it was his own fault that he jumped. I understand, it's a horrible accident, but it was due to his own negligence that this happened, and it was proven in court by a jury.
Well, you cited a few things down there. Falling off a horse, that's your own problem. That's something you did yourself. That's not caused by.
How about if the horse reacted?
It's like, wait a minute. Disc golf, you're getting hit by a flying object that you don't see and don't have coming. If you fall off a horse, that's your own fault, because you fell off the horse. Nobody went up and pushed you off the horse, or.
Do you know how many people get hit with discs per year? Do we have any research on that? Do you have anything to back up that?
That number.
No, because it doesn't happen. Like I said, no one's ever died from getting hit with a disc. So therefore, none of that, a jury has come to the conclusion that a disc is an inanimate.
With you. All I wanted to.
I don't have any issue either, but I'm just saying, what you're bringing, what I'm sitting here talking about with you, I don't have, I don't believe you have any background with it. There's nothing behind there.
Rodrick, stick to all of us. We're not going to have a conversation back and forth.
Understands.
You've made your point.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. I think this can be done safely, the way it is set up now. There's going to be a lot of other information put forward to make people concerned and scared about this, including traffic studies, speeding, all the other fun stuff that's going to be out there. So we're going to hear it for another 10 minutes or so, and then we're going to move on with the rest of the agenda, because this was put to bed a month ago. As far as the letters that were put forth, were people who were involved with the discussion prior to, so it's not new information. One is a scare tactic of Martha's Vineyard, and I do feel bad for the gentleman who lost his eye, and that's horrible. But we're not going to instill fear that a disc and disc golf is going to provide an opportunity for multiple concerns for injury. I agree with you. Dog bites, especially for people who don't put them on a leash, is a big issue at the Glen. We spend inordinate amount of time with our animal control officer down there, providing protections against that. So I'm going to ask you to quickly stop for a minute. We're going to give a few other people, and if you have any rebuttal from that, I will allow you to come back up, but we're going to have other people.
This is as far as like speeding cars. We have track meets down there where other people from other town come down there. I mean, disc golf is not going to create any more speeding.
I, the main issue we have with speeding in neighborhoods, unfortunately, people don't realize it, but it's the people who live there.
I understand. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rodrick. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thomas Penning, 297 Glen Road. I'll remain civil, okay? It's about being factual and just expressing, you know, opinions here. We're just following a democratic process. I think that's important. While I first spoke before you on August 12th, I'm back tonight because many residents, particularly those of us living near the Glen, haven't had a fair opportunity to do the same between that meeting and your September 8th vote to approve a 18-hole disc golf course. Tonight, I want to address, that's the theme tonight, is the lack of transparent communication and information that has left residents feeling uninformed and excluded from a process that directly affects their neighborhood. Also, between, you know, August and September is vacation, people are not around, right? So first, on timing and sequence of events. I only learned about this proposal when the Town Council agenda appeared online a few days before the August 12th meeting. I receive RSS feed automatically that crawls through any events that I'm interested in. I attended the meeting, voiced my concern, and I was told I'd be kept informed after the meeting with one of the project's proponents, Dan Mayer, great guy. Yet, heard nothing more until September 3rd, when I sent a text message asking for an update. Meanwhile, I wondered why this hadn't surfaced sooner. Then, almost magically, on August 19th, the Parks and Recreation Committee uploaded a backlog of meeting minutes all at once to the Rhode Island Secretary of State's Open Meeting Portal, including the April 10th and May 15 meetings. A pattern, by the way, that has been the same for the past few years. As of today, no minutes have been posted for June 26th, August 21st, September 18th, and October 16th meeting. It is literally impossible for residents to understand what discussion took place and how this proposal even came about. This brings me to my second point, the legal baseline. Under Rhode Island Open Meetings Act, agendas must be posted at least 48 hours in advance, and minutes must be filed within 35 days or by the next meeting. That's straight from the Attorney General's Open Government Guide, and it's echoed in the Parks and Recreation Committee bylaws, which explicitly require compliance with state law. The current posting pattern falls well short of that standard. And lastly, my first point is courtesy. I hope we can have courtesy tonight. Like many here tonight, I'm in a border of Glen Park. Courtesy notices or proactive engagement have been nonexistent. On September 4th, while outside with my children, I saw the Parks and Rec Chair walking the park with one of the disc golf proponents, Roderick, who's present here. Since I had been contacted, where I was told that I would be reached out to, I thought I'd take the opportunity to introduce myself. They haven't spoken to me. As I approached with my daughter and called out from a distance the chair and say, "Hi, I'm Thomas Penning. I live right there in the park." "Oh, I know who you are," he replied, and kept walking, as if there was any precedent to our interactions before, offering no greeting or conversation, or vindebility to talk about what was going on. And while I won't repeat the disrespectful comments many residents have endured online in the All Things Portsmouth Facebook group, the pattern speaks for itself. There's been no courtesy, no collaboration, and no willingness to simply hear each other out. We're all neighbors here, except the guys from Mass that showed up, but we can and should do better. So in closing, you'll hear tonight from other residents presenting facts and perspective that have not been presented before and that were never part of this record. So my ask is simple. Reset the process, reconsider your vote, and allow written and verbal public comments before any further action, because ultimately, better process produces better outcome, whichever way the decision goes at the end of the day. So thank you for your time, and I will be submitting factual points.
Thank you, Ms. Penning. Ms. Burke?
Hello. My name is Cynthia Burke, and I am at.
He's a little bit taller than you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great.
Much better.
Okay, super. My name is Cynthia Burke. I'm at 1360 East Main Road, and I want to talk about what's going on with Glen Park. So I've been a resident here for more than 30 years, and I've been walking my dogs at Glen Park for just about 30 years, maybe a little more, and I always walk them on a leash, and I enjoy my time there. I work hard. I love relaxing. It's a great place to walk. You feel safe. My dogs are safe. Everything's great. My dogs love to go after balls when I throw them. They also love to go after frisbees. My dogs don't know the difference between a disc golf spinning in the air and a frisbee. I'm concerned about walking and having something whizzing through the air, whether it hits my dog or hits me. I'm just not comfortable with having that in a park that's supposed to be serene and safe and comfortable. And after 30 years of enjoying it, I'm not comfortable trying to find another place to take my dogs. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to raise it up.
Raise it up. Aye, aye. Herrick Enshin, Commander, United States Navy, retired naval aviator, two combat deployments in the 1980s to Lebanon and Libya in support of the multinational peacekeeping effort in Lebanon and Freedom of Navigation operations in Libya. I am currently employed as a property casualty insurance broker for Brown &amp; Brown Insurance, working out of their New Bedford, Massachusetts office. I've been with them for 27 years, specializing in, again, in property casualty insurance. So I'm going to go real rapid-fire here with a quick primer on risk management, that hopefully the, I welcome the town passing this on to your town risk manager. I'm assuming the town's insurance carrier is the Rhode Island Interlocal Risk Management Trust? Is that, is that correct? I'd be curious to the total limits of liability, but of course, we always instruct our clients to keep it confidential and never produce more than the $1 million primary limits of coverage unless requested otherwise. I've been tossing around whether this is considered a high-risk, elevated risk with adding this new exposure to the town's insurance policy through the RIRMT. High-risk things like roofers, police officers, construction contractors, you get into the professional aspect, architects and engineers, lawyers, medical surgeons, physicians. With respect to the individual that was injured on the vineyard, I think if you asked her, his wife, Karen Cullen, that she would probably opine that this is a high-risk exposure. So anyway, I realize the go-ahead, the approval's been given, so, but I think it's important to know that there's both requirement for an owner's policy, the Town of Portsmouth, and there's a requirement for a tenant's policy, Portsmouth Disc Golf Association. So with respect to the town, has the town risk manager performed an adequate analysis on this new exposure?
Yes.
Has RIRMT been approached on the new GL exposure?
Yes.
Is it excluded from coverage?
No.
Are there any policy exclusions of concern where there may not be coverage?
We have multiple sports and activities at all of our properties, and our town policy covers them all equally, whether it's softball, baseball, lacrosse.
So you're going to need to add a golf course. So you're going to need to add a golf course general liability classification code, which is going to be based upon the estimated sales.
If, if it were a golf course, yes, but it's not a golf.
They're going to take the most, the closest classification code under the general liability classification manual to make it a determination. Good. I'd, I think, and I think a lot of the resident taxpayers will be curious what the additional premium is going to be, since we're putting the bill for it.
We were told none.
I find that hard to believe, and they're also typically auditable at expiration. You've also got, if the park and rec is involved in the course design, then you've got to notify your E and O and architects and engineers liability policies, assuming you have those. Because it's excluded under the commercial general liability coverage form.
All I'm going to tell you is that it was cleared with our trust to go forward.
Okay. Let's talk about the tenant real quick. Have you received any kind of indication what their premium's going to be?
There is no tenant. If there is a league that wants to utilize the course, they would have to pick up an insurance policy, just like Little League, just like fourth and shoe soccer, just like four H.
Okay, well, we, we typically strongly recommend that the tenant carry equivalent limits to the owner. So I, I assume the town is probably carrying something in the eight-figure range between primary and excess liability?
As you just stated, I'm not going to discuss what our liability coverages are.
Suffice it to say, I, I think that the town probably has rather substantial excess liability coverage. Fair enough?
I believe the town is sufficiently covered for liability, yes.
Good. Just with the understanding that for the tenant, you start talking about excess liability coverage, it gets very expensive very quick. Also, I'm sure they know that they're going to be named, on their policy, they're going to name the town as an additional insured. Waiver of subrogation. Sign course agreement with a.
They are going to be required. Well, I can stop this list of things. They are going to be required to do everything any other league in Portsmouth that utilizes this town property does. No different, no less. Lacrosse is a dangerous sport. Baseball's a dangerous sport. Softball's a dangerous sport. Football's a dangerous sport. Soccer gives a lot of concussions. All of them do the same thing that this, if there is a league, will be required to do going forward. Period.
Great. My only concern is that the town has done due diligence with respect to risk management on this added exposure.
And we have.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you for your time, sir.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Keen?
My name's Emily Skeen. I'm a marine scientist. I served on the Portsmouth School Committee and was just appointed to Portsmouth Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, but I'm providing my personal opinion. I wasn't able to make it to the town council meeting when this was previously on the agenda because I was coaching soccer at the Glen at the time of the meeting. And I do really encourage hearing from other local residents. There's been a lot of thought about how, you know, kind of different angles to consider. So I'll just put one perspective. I bought my first house ever along the Glen due to proximity to Glen Park, and now I walk there daily. I've stayed overnight at Glen Park with the Portsmouth Scouts PAC One, and I visit year round with my children. I think the open space at Glen Park is a draw for the entire community, as well as prospective home buyers. I don't necessarily think that hearing testimony from out-of-state residents is as relevant as the draw that we have all purchased homes nearby or, you know, attend the existing uses. But what I want to ask is, what is the vision for Glen Park? Because as soon I came from Newport, I bought there because of Glen Park. I started immediately kind of trying to understand what the planning efforts were. And so I found that there's a discrepancy between reserved and conserved in the Portsmouth twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan when it comes to the Glen Park. In map twenty, which is future land use, Glen Park, the map depicts a visual depiction of the community's desire for types, patterns, and intensities for development of the landscape. It labels Glen Park as prime farmland, non-urban developed, and reserved. Whereas other areas in Portsmouth are clearly labeled as open space. This kind of mystified me because it really is a key gem in the open space preservation. In map twenty-two in the comp plan, which is future land use, it identifies all of Glen Park as conserved. I was trying to understand the difference between these two designations. And I understand that in the town of Portsmouth, local conservation areas are protected natural lands, and the use is restricted to passive recreation and non-motorized activities like walking, hiking, wildlife observation. If the Glen Park is designated as a local conservation area, I am trying to understand how disc golf would be permitted from the Conservation Commission's oversight. And I understand they previously did not recommend this moving forward because their order is to protect the natural resources and habitat of these conserved spaces, which have been previously identified for Glen Park. Also, in twenty twenty-three, Hornsley Witten Group facilitated the development of Portsmouth Park Recreation Open Space Master Plan, which included rigorous analysis, outreach efforts, two public workshops, and surveys. I attended both public workshops and participated in the entire plan process. The plan states Glen Park is heavily used community park. It's used by the Recreation Department as its primary summer camp site. The plan also recognizes that Portsmouth Youth Soccer Association maintains dedicated field caretakers paying for seasonal line stripping, rolling fields, aeration, fertilizers, we know for Gardney Savini, but also Glen Park. And Portsmouth Little League and Softball League keep Glen Fields looking good, but the existing facilities don't adequately accommodate all the games and practices demand that the Little League currently has. So there are two partners we already have who don't even feel this space can meet all their demands, and they do offer to the community services that help maintain these parks. During that twenty twenty-two outreach planning for the Open Space Master Plan, the public said, with increasing sports events being held at Glen Park, there are serious concerns about traffic safety. It's frustrating the haphazard approach the town has taken in recent years to approve new sports activities and facilities. Example, the volleyball at Glen Park. It's great that we're introducing new sports, but there's been a complete disregard for the existing traffic safety concerns that will continue to grow over time. It's only a matter of time before a child gets seriously injured by a car accident. We're excited for this master plan to be developed. But this long-term vision and stop piecemealing smaller ideas together without consideration for the overall picture. Unfortunately, there used to be a Glen Park Working Committee, which is now disbanded. Again, I'm not going to discuss safety, but there was a traffic study. We have the results. As a resident, I know the volume has significantly increased over the last few years because it's a heavily used park, and there are fifty houses on Glen Road that would be coming and leaving. But there's more than that in terms of the cars. So according to this master plan, future opportunities at Glen Park include improving ADA accessibility throughout the site and creating a strong connection to the Savini Fields and the Aquinic Land Trust Trails. According to the community survey, Glen Park was ranked number one when asked which open space recreation facility or recreational place in Portsmouth is used the most. With all the community input gathered and the research done to complete the park's recreation open space master plan, it's interesting that it does not mention disc golf once in the entire document. In the appendix listed in one survey question, the question was, what would you like to see in Portsmouth? Out of eight hundred and twenty-five responses, three people indicated that they would like a disc golf course. So while the master plan, the presentation made to this town council on May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, did not mention disc golf, there were two references in the entire three hundred and ninety-five page appendix. Glen Park, according to that master plan, is nine and a half acres. It has wetlands along the stream, which is attributable to the Secanet River. According to the standards outlined in CRMC's Title six hundred and fifty Rhode Island Code of Regulations twenty dash zero zero dash one, a hundred-foot buffer distance from a freshwater wetland needs to be enforced. I hope that is consideration, taken into consideration. In addition, the Professional Disc Golf Association advises that an eighteen-hole golf court, sorry, an eighteen-hole disc golf course requires roughly thirty to forty acres. Glen Park is nine point four acres. Also, a Massachusetts letter filed with Portsmouth referenced the need for five to ten percent staff allocation for course upkeep. While Portsmouth DPW is already understaffed and is already outsourcing mowing, I don't understand how this will be done as the mower can't even fully get around the the baskets. And you did discuss the liability for tournaments, but there was the idea of checking these discs out at the library and allowing anyone to be using this. So for my own safety, I don't feel safe walking when anyone in the public could be taking these out and using them. Go to a larger park in Nuneegret where it's two hundred and twenty acres for an eighteen disc golf course. So the town council wants to ignore the input and recommendations of the Park and Recreation Open Space Master Plan and proceed with the disc golf. It needs to reconcile its plans, revise the comp plan maps, draft a staffing and maintenance plan, secure additional funds for DPW and the Parks Department so they can create a system to manage multiple users during certain hours, address, address litter, safety, road safety, so that all users can enjoy the park safely. Thank you.
Ms. Felton, we only have people come up once. I mean, just, just so we can keep the, you know, like you wanted to keep it short.
I, it's apparently not going to be short. We'll stay here all night if we have to.
Okay, but I mean, I know, I just, I just don't want the same people to be.
For thirty minutes and with no new evidence.
Hunter Shin, one twenty-seven Francoella Drive. There's been a lot of new evidence that was just shared, so you know. So here tonight, I'm going to talk about the technology of discs versus frisbees because a lot of people have been saying that this is a game of frisbee. This is frisbee golf. That's simply not true. Frisbees are intended for recreational design. Frisbees have warning labels on them. Discs do not. Discs are designed for maximum speed and distance. The average recreational player can produce speeds between fifty and sixty miles per hour at the range of three hundred to four hundred feet. By the way, I corresponded with a source who I happened to grow up with on Francoella Drive. They've asked to remain anonymous, but they play the sport of disc golf. They play it avidly. This is what they had to say about the subject. Quote, "I do agree. I wish they could find another location. And speaking from experience, I can sling a driver disc four hundred feet at seventy miles per hour. Not to mention discs can go off trajectory from the hole and end up literally anywhere." That's a direct quote from someone who plays the sport of disc golf. Even they have their reservations about the location of Glen Park. Another thing I want to mention is this, because this was mentioned at the hour and thirty-four minute mark of the September eighth meeting by the Parks and Recreation Committee about the footprint of a disc golf course and its relatively small size. As Mrs. Skeen just eloquently put, the required footprint for an eighteen-hole championship disc golf course, that's a disc golf course that hosts tournaments, ranges from thirty to forty acres. According to the appendix of the Open Space Commission, the acreage of Glen Park is nine point four acres. For the sake of comparison, Nuneegret's eighteen-hole disc golf course is among two hundred and twenty-seven acres of land in which the disc golf course is clearly defined. These disc golf courses are intended for it to be separate from other activities within the park. So my question is, where in the presentations did they discuss this particular activity that's going to be separate from all the other activities within the park, whether it be softball, volleyball, yoga classes, so on and so forth, cross-country? How is it going to be separate from those other activities? And where are the clear defined boundaries that will detail that?
They were laid out in the plan. If you read the plan.
Okay, but, okay, but this should have been talked about before the vote.
It was. It was. There were two meetings. Wait, wait. There were two meetings. There were one plan. They were asked to come back with a separate plan to alleviate some of the concerns of folks on Francoella Drive. Also, our concerns about it being at the manor house proper. And they came back with a different plan for a recreational, non-championship-level disc golf course. The Glen proper, as far as I know, is thirty-eight acres, not nine point four. So I don't know.
That's not, that's not, no.
That's what Glen Park is listed as, the Glen proper.
Not listed as thirty-eight acres.
Okay. It is thirty-eight acres for the manor house and the Glen property. Then you get up to the other acreage up above by seventy. Okay, it is, but we'll go forward. It's not nine point four acres.
Yes, it is nine point four acres, according to the appendix. Yes, it is. So, but you didn't answer my question. Where is this disc golf course going to be clearly defined as a disc golf course that will not interfere with the activities that already happened there? Where are the boundaries of this disc golf course? Because a disc golf course is clearly labeled, marked, and designed, so it's separated from the other activities at place.
It already is.
No, it is not.
Okay. You and I are going to disagree on this one, but it is laid out. It doesn't interfere with any other activities. It's not on a soccer field. It's not on a softball field. It's on three fields that don't get used at all and currently just get mowed. And it doesn't interfere with volleyball. It does not interfere with the volleyball.
Yes, it does.
It does not. You're, I, I, I want to stop everybody, please. I want to stop everybody from doing the exaggeration and bringing in the worst-case scenario. God forbid, nobody else dies on Glen Road. Okay? I, for one, know somebody who died on Glen Road.
And I know somebody who got struck in the eye with a disc and, no, he was not jumping up trying to catch the disc. He was not trying to.
Let's just, we're going to avoid the hyperbole's here.
That's not a hyperbole. That's an accurate story that was presented, and I corresponded with that woman.
So let's start with the fact that this is a two-year trial of a recreational disc golf course at the Glen. As was put forth by the people who want to do this, they are willing to make sure that it's maintained, that it is picked up, that it is clean. I would ask the people who walk their dogs, who picks up your dog bags? Because it's not all of you. So let's not discuss trash and litter. Let's not discuss hypothetical injuries because I can go down the same list that Mr. Dubai came up with with injuries in every other sport. It's a two-year trial. It's been voted on. It will not be voted on again here tonight. I'm giving a courtesy for people to speak again on this because theoretically, people couldn't make it to either one of the two meetings. But we're not going to go through the hyperbole of people losing eyes, trash buildup, excess traffic for a handful of people that might play on a given basis.
That story was not a hyperbole. That story was something that I confirmed, and I'll have you.
Confirmed it too. It happened. I understand that.
Okay, so it's not a hyperbole. So can I just tell you that during that entire process, there was no accident insurance covered by the town, so there was no successful outcome for the plaintiff? So if somebody gets struck with a disc within an acreage of nine point four, it's nine point four acres, what are the potential repercussions? That's my question. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President, can I just interject here? I, I just want to have some clarity on something. I was part of the walkthrough that took place before the presentation and the vote. And I, I must say that during that walkthrough, it was said at least a half a dozen times that, well, that can be moved. it was said at least a half a dozen times that, well, that can be moved, that can be taken care of, that can be moved. There, believe me, there was not a clear-cut determination that this is definitely where it was going to go. Through the walkthrough, I think there were at least five or six holes that it was stated that we can change this, and we can change that, and we can do this, and we can do that. So just, I just need you to hear that. It wasn't in stone, even when we got it, where these holes are going to be, so.
Mary, I'll reflect on that right now. We did the walk-around so we could design the course with everybody's opinions. That's why we came to the town council and asked for everyone to come around for the walk-around. Let's hear your concerns. Let's hear your, you know, what you have. That's why we, what was your name again? I'm sorry. Not you, him. Thomas. That's why we took Thomas on there. He knew about everything going on. We knew. We took all your concerns, right? That, yeah. Like I said, okay, I'll reflect. We made a point. Like I said, we took the town council down there. We made sure that, you know, we don't want it to confer with any other activities there. We, that's why there was, you know, all right, hey, we'll move that. If you don't want this there, we will move it. We're just bending over, making sure everybody is happy here, like we've done. We don't want anybody getting hurt. And as far as disco and 460 miles per hour, look at the numbers. It's awesome. I support. Everything I say is backed up by facts. I can tell you that disc golf is the least dangerous activity going on at the Glen. That includes walking your dog. That includes walking down the path all the way to the beach. I mean, it's, that's facts. That's facts.
You already.
You know?
Yep. Thank you.
And not only that, I'd like to add another thing too on how we're saying, oh, well, the Glen is for free space. Well, if that's a place, let's get a bulldozer down there, take out Davidson Field, let's take out the volleyball. Do you see my point I'm trying to make?
Yeah, yes. Excuse me, can I, can I, Mr. President, can I just interject? Can I, excuse me, can I ask the audience to limit their comments to when they're at the podium? And those who are at the podium should not be addressing anybody in the audience during their testimony. This is an opportunity to offer testimony that the president has given. This is not a debate. This is not a debate with other members of the audience, and this is not an opportunity to ask and have your questions answered. If you have questions, state them, and at some point the council can choose to respond or not. But please just offer your testimony, offer it to the council as a whole, and let's try to move this along in a respectful manner. Thank you.
Mr. President, I did have one question before you sat down. No, as far as designing, that's a, that's a very responsible position. How many courses have your group or yourself designed? Okay, because if, honest to God, if you go on and look up what the PDGA recommends, this is why they recommend a planner. It says, "Disc golf courses designed by amateurs can be dangerous because of unintended flight paths." Well, there's calculations to know the, how far and how off course, how far off course a disc can fly, and they'll base that on prevailing winds, types of discs to be used in the course, the angles, and it's a lot of.
Right, please.
Okay, all right, because this is, this is something that people get paid for, and it's a very specialized.
No, we're not. We're not, we're not doing this debate.
But I, but.
Ma'am, please. Thank you.
Before I move on to what I was going to talk about, I just want to say that.
I need your, just your name and address.
Sure. My name's, my name's Bryce Healy, and I live on Glen Road at 135.
Thank you.
I've played disc golf a number of times, and I'm just, I just wanted to state that I'm terrible at it because, again, I've only played a couple of times, and my accuracy when throwing the disc is not good. And so I'm imagining that people playing the course, for the most part, since everyone's going to be an amateur, that the accuracy when they're throwing the disc will also not be good. This is not at all part of my speech, but because these things have come up, I decided to talk about it. One of the holes in the second design that was put online runs directly adjacent to the soccer fields, the U-10 soccer fields, and, you know, it's just one of the examples of many being very close, in very close proximity. And I know that's considered a field that's not necessarily in use right now, but to be honest, if I were to throw a disc from that hole to the basket, my disc would probably be going in the soccer field, just for instance. Moving on to what I was going to talk about today, I'm here to speak about a couple of traffic studies that have been done on Glen Road. One was done in May of 2021 by my request, and one was just completed a couple weeks ago at the end of September. I've lived on Glen Road for, since 2013, and over the past 12 and a half years, I've witnessed a steady increase in the volume of traffic and an increasing problem with the high speed of travel, especially after the road was paved several years ago. I requested a traffic study back in 2021 as we became more and more concerned with the safety of our kids waiting at the bus stop or even getting the mail, not to mention the anxiety of allowing them to even walk down the street to the park or ride their bikes out of our driveway. When we first moved to the neighborhood, we were the only family that had young kids. Now, there's at least 10 other homes in the neighborhood that have kids high school age or younger. So before I share the results of the study, I also just wanted to talk about the the traffic pattern and the layout of the homes and the other destinations on our road. Glen Road is unique in that there are about 50 homes in total from the top of the street that intersects with East Main Road down to Cutler Court, Francoella Drive, and Heidi Drive, which are all dead-end roads off of Glen Road. In addition to the 50 homes, Glen Park, which we're speaking of today, and the Glen Manor House, which is a popular wedding and event venue, are both located off Glen Road. There's one way in Glen Road and one way out, which means every car traveling down the road is also coming out the same way. Both traffic studies were conducted just after the intersection of Cutler Court and Glen Road, which is about a quarter of a mile from East Main when traveling east down Glen Road. The location of this study eliminates cars traveling to the first 10 or so homes. Therefore, the study includes residents who are traveling to the remainder 40, 40 homes and beyond this point to Glen Park and the Glen Manor House. These numbers will become more relevant when I begin talking about the volume of traffic traveling down Glen Road. The conclusion of the study that was completed in 2021, the volume of cars going down East Road, sorry, the volume of cars going east on Glen Road averaged 743.7 cars per day. Due to the layout and the nature of the road, we are left to conclude that the majority of these cars also travel the opposite direction up the road. This leaves us with approximately 1,450 cars traveling the road per day. Between the hours of 7:00 AM and midnight, every hour the max speeds recorded were 50 miles per hour or higher, with the highest speeds of 61, 66, and 74 miles an hour. The study that was just completed this, in the past couple of weeks, the volumes of cars going east on Glen Road averaged 1,203.9 cars per day. Again, our conclusion is that approximately 1,200 cars also travel the other direction, leaving us to believe that around 2,400 cars are traveling the road per day. Between the hours of 6:00 AM and midnight, just about every hour the max speeds again were 50 miles per hour or higher, with the highest speeds being 61, 66, and 69 miles an hour. In the four years between the two studies, there was a 62% increase in the average volume of cars traveling Glen Road. To conclude, there has been an exponential growth in the events and use of Glen Park and the use of the Glen Manor House, which has contributed to the drastic increase of traffic on Glen Road and the dangerously high speeds. At some point, the residents would hope the town of Portsmouth would consider there is a tipping point where the overuse of these areas can impact the residents and create a danger to those residents living on this road. Just a suggestion, because I know that, I don't think this has been suggested to the disc golf people because I don't want, you know, there not to be a disc golf course in Portsmouth. I just personally don't believe that this is the right place for it, considering everything everyone has talked about tonight. I'm curious if the Parks and Rec Department has has offered or suggested the plot of land owned by the town across from the Penfield School on Sandy Point as an alternative location for the disc golf. The plot of land was purchased by the town years ago and has gone unused and undeveloped. So that's not so much a question for you. I'm just curious. You don't even have to answer.
The eastern section is farmed out. The northern, the western section is, well, on the agenda further down.
Okay.
Becomes soccer fields, which may alleviate some of the soccer traffic at the Glen, but I can't guarantee that.
But that's like, that, so I'm also part of the whole soccer program in town, very involved in it. And I know that that is something that's being considered, but would happen years down the road if it happens at all.
It's at least 18 months just to go grass.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask for your indulgence one quick second. Our Zoom, not yours, I'm sorry. Our Zoom died, so we have to reboot Zoom to make sure that the people who are at home who might be wanting to get on can get on. So we're going to take a quick, just a quick second to have Kathy reboot and get back on again.